Recording has started.
Thank you. We have a hard stop at 5:00. I have a proposal for Mission Driven. Commissioner Willie, what do you think of this? Mission Driven. We commit ourselves to serving the community, providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulated services. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization. Innovation and calculated risk-taking are essential. We commit ourselves to best practices and professional standards and to continuous improvement and creativity. And things can be compressed.
Okay with me?
Commissioner Rogers?
Oh. Sorry. In ways that reduce long-term cost and mitigate risks.
So we have the pursuit of excellent attention?
Yeah.
So. Turn her into Willie, read again. I think Commissioner Bye was out of the room.
No, I thought it was a conversation between the Chair and Commissioner Willie.
It's a proposal.
No, it's a proposal. And I wanted to get the proposal out there.
So turn her into Willie. Will you say it again so now that everybody's aware that it's a proposal?
Sure. Mission Driven. We commit ourselves to serving the community, providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulated services. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization. Innovation and calculated risk-taking are essential. We commit ourselves to best practices, professional standards, continuous improvement and creativity in ways that reduce long-term risks and long-term cost and mitigate risks.
Yeah, sounds okay.
Commissioner Grace?
It's long.
Good.
Okay. Commissioner Willie?
No, I'm good. What happened to emergency preparedness and response?
We got rid of it.
It's gone.
It's deleted.
All right. Commissioner Rogers?
I'd like to get it down to two words, but this is fine.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sure there are ways to compress.
Yeah.
So we'll keep the qualities, but compress the setting.
Thank you. We'll work on scribing that and have that up for you by the end of the meeting.
Perfect.
I'm going to turn it over to Rachel Fuller.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, we are going to move into the priority setting part of the exercise or the workshop now. So the purpose of this presentation is just to set the stage for that. So next slide, Megan. We're going to talk a little bit about why the Board is considering approving a list of focus areas and priorities, a reminder of how we're organized, and the breakdown in capacities for supporting work, review the principles, criteria, and decision-making, and review what we heard from the Board at the last roundtable regarding priorities and some additional options for consideration. Okay, Megan. Two slides. There you go. Next one. Thanks. As the Board developed the approach for strategic planning last winter, the Board identified an urgent need for direction and prioritization. So this is especially important given some of the significant financial issues facing the county, which we talked about this morning, include revenue constraints from Oregon's property tax system, identified needs for capital construction and cost inflation in several areas. And given the Board's knowledge of the organization and the community, the Board is in a good position to provide direction and priorities. So articulated priorities allow the organization to focus and align around those stated priorities, and the priorities would inform, help inform the county budget process. And as you'll see on the next slide, which is fine to move to, the initial priority list would inform the community strategic planning process. So this is the Board-approved strategic planning process, although I have changed just some of the language in the initial plan to reflect some of the conversations we've had here. This demonstrates that the initial plan is developed while the organization begins development of the comprehensive strategic plan and strategic planning program, and also demonstrates that that comprehensive plan continues well beyond the initial plan. Fine. Another one, Megan, please.
Could I ask you to go back to the previous slide? And what brought this to mind is you said that you words meant a little bit on the initial plan. On the right side, under comprehensive strategic plan, it says engage ACRE. And to this point, it's been engaging ACRE in the selection of a consultant.
That's correct.
So I think I just would like to see engage ACRE be expanded upon about how.
In the writing of the RFP and the selection of the consultant.
Just briefly.
That's specific, yeah. Appreciate that.
So you're saying you can dense those three bullet points into one bullet?
No. I just wanted to find how ACRE is engaged.
Oh, okay.
Develop RFP, select the concession.
Sure. I think if I hear you correctly, Commissioner, it's to engage ACRE in the development of the RFP and the selection of the consultant. Developing the RFP and selecting the consultant are also, yeah, discrete steps.
But why aren't we engaging ACRE on the work plan and engagement plan? That's the part.
So you're saying it should say engage ACRE in the following ways. Develop an RFP, consultant, work plan, strategic planning.
I just, I have no problem with develop RFP with ACRE's engagement or with ACRE or something like that. But I want to make sure that we haven't lost their involvement. Yeah. That's all.
Where's this document going? Isn't this kind of for us?
No, this is a graphic we've been using.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, the engage ACRE, it could stay there as far as I'm concerned. We haven't overcommitted ourselves, and we've got ACRE serving, a couple of members serving on the RFP interview, so.
And there will be time to further refine the steps in the development of the strategic plan, work plan, and engagement, so we can further.
So maybe what you could do is those three bullets below is italicize them or somehow make them different about should that implies future.
Sure.
I think you know, Captain. I'm just concerned about making sure we're not.
I don't think we've overcommitted ourselves at all. I think it's just fine the way it is. I don't get the sensitivity point. What I find confusing, Board develops future area prior, future. Under initial plan, Board develops focus areas, priorities for two years. No, we're not going to be developing for two years. It's for use over two years.
Sure, I can, that's the intent, and I'll clarify the language. Yeah, exactly. Okay. Okay. Ready to move on? Okay. So this was a request that came from last time. So we've brought the organizational structure back, just a reminder of how we're organized under the County Administrator, who reports directly to the Board.
I love this very visually. It's going to show the community.
Yeah, we can.
Who to contact? I wish in Washington County, local was bigger. Or to put it differently, the other two were smaller.
That can happen, I'm pretty sure. Sure.
Either way.
Okay, next slide, Megan. So this, the Board regularly articulates and expresses most of what the organization does is provide services to the community. And it's not intended to accomplish services. In fact, it doesn't. But it does show the wide range of services. Employees spend most of their time building and maintaining roads, processing permits and licenses, prosecuting crimes, helping people check out books, responding to calls for service, helping people find stable housing. And in addition, there's a wide range of administrative services that support this service delivery model. So those include information technology, legal, finance, processing contracts, and more. So next slide.
I have a couple of things on this. It says county services, but we're going to get, there are some sensitivity points. On the first row, provide public safety and policing. We only provide policing in rural areas and UUAs. So it's like, put an asterisk there.
Sure.
Similarly, with build and maintain road signals and streetlights, an asterisk goes there. Manage and secure the organizations. Is it rural organizations? Or is it, is there an apostrophe in there somewhere? Wanted to make sure we're not taking responsibility for organizations and computer systems of others.
Sure. Yeah. Our own organization, yeah.
Yeah.
County, computer systems.
Yeah.
Data, yeah.
Other than that, I think we won't have any confusion or sensitivity points with other governments and service districts.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rachel, could we go back one slide?
Sure.
There's a note here about elected officials a little kind of on the left. But I don't know that it shows where we sit.
Oh, under liaisons. That little brown icon.
Yeah.
There we go.
It's intended to identify those departments that are managed by elected officials.
Those are just, those are just, that's Karen and Barton.
And the judge, Cross.
Yeah.
And then the auditor.
Okay. So that's in relationship to those people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I might suggest, if I say that, you make that box a different color.
Sure.
But no, because the little box.
Little hard to see, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Was there transportation, bridges? Did I see any from there? Other slide.
Is transportation in here?
Build and maintain roads.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Build and maintain roads, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there, not everything is in here. I'll be the first to admit that. We just couldn't, we couldn't fit everything in.
That's okay.
I think it's pretty cool. I like the way you did that.
Yeah, and, you know, it's really intended to show the scope and scale of what the county does. We could add a lot more. Yeah.
Are we at solid waste management from there?
That is one of our services. We, yeah.
Wasn't a roof or a garbage truck?
You know, we actually haven't shared this with.
I have that seriously.
I know, and we haven't shared this with departments, and I expect we're going to hear some of the same things. Where am I? So the point is well made.
Well, it wasn't, I wasn't necessarily referring to a department. I was trying to build the connection to our, like, to residents out there for clean water services.
This is county, not clean water services.
Yeah, I get, I get that. But waste management, it's all, like, is it county? Like, how do we build that? And actually, all the responsibility the county has. Even though, you're right, like, there are departments that do these services. Water is a department. So anyways, that's what I was asking the question.
Okay.
The ground or who?
Yeah, this does not include clean water services, just Washington County. And I think if this is a graphic that people like, these are, this is great input, and we can continue to improve it. This is, you're the first ones to see this.
Well, for me, protect public health through disease outbreak investigation, regulation of food safety, and more. As in more.
And more, yeah, that's kind of.
That builds the solid waste collection disposal?
Ah, there you go.
We do that for public health?
We do that.
Okay.
Okay. So this also is intended, and you can go to the next slide, to show that most of, and the Board recognizes this, most of what the organization does is provide these day-to-day services that you saw on the next slide. And policymaking is highly visible and is almost 100% the focus of the Board, and is critical to modernizing the organization, making sure the organization is adapting to meet the community's needs. And it is, one of the reasons we're here today is to prioritize those key policies, those key priorities, so that the organization can support the Board in that role. Because akin to the last slide, most of what we do is just provide those day-to-day services. So prioritization is really, really essential. Okay. We'll talk a little bit about how the work we're doing today helps with that prioritization. The Board, the Board does this work collectively. The prioritization work collectively. The Board really operates with one voice in providing direction to the organization. And so our goal is to come out of these workshops with a list of priorities for the organization agreed to collectively by the Board. Board members receive input from the community, from staff, from, because of state and federal mandates about what priorities could be, and must ultimately decide together what the priorities will be. So really appreciate that this is not an easy task for a Board to do, but this is what we're here to do. Okay, next slide. We won't go through this. Principles and criteria are one of the filters that the Board can use to help in the decision-making process. We've gone through these. And then, actually, Megan. Could you go to 14? It looks like they're, go to 14, and then we'll have to go back to 13. So these are the focus areas that the Board discussed at our last workshop. This is pretty much verbatim what was written down. This is provided in your, in the presentation, and we have them up here on the list. And then we also added, and if you go back a slide, Megan, some potential additions for consideration based on work that is already happening. These two combined are a very big list for the Board and for the organization. So talked with Tanya, and this work could be accomplished. We will need to scope some of it going forward within a two, within a two-year timeframe. But this is a lot. And so we're really at a point where if other things go on the list, something needs to come off, and we really need to have that prioritization discretion. And, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I printed the principles and criteria, the two-year focus areas, potential additions for consideration on one page, so I can see the whole set. But people could just as easily put those slides in front of them. And what on the two-year, somewhere between the two-year focus areas and potential considerations, I asked myself, where's business development? And I see we have CHIPS Act, and there's a lot on the two-year focus area priority slide, and broadband. So the only aspect of business development that seemed not there on the page for me is what we've been trying to do with equitable workforce development. And it's not part of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Strategic Action Plan 2.0 per se, or I'm wondering if it is. But I just wanted to make sure, especially, I feel like I can turn to Commissioner Willie and ask, do we have business development there? I'm not asking us to do anything more. I think we've got a lot going on already. But have we signaled that it is a focus area? Because we've certainly invested.
We have economic development strategies, O and E25 and beyond under the two-year focus.
Oh, where did I miss? Oh, I missed it. Thank you. Thank you. Never mind. I used up all your time.
Well, and also, and actually, that's a perfect segue, because we also included the budget priorities on the next slide.
Yep.
And support economic development equitable economic development through the investment of American Rescue Plan Act funds is on that slide. And so I might suggest that we, if the Board wanted to, we could go ahead and put that on the list as is. So that's a great catch. Okay. And then just really quickly to the next step slide. So we are, once the, once the priorities are agreed to, that really becomes that interim plan. The Board would approve those priorities. As I mentioned, we may need to scope some of the priorities, whether because we don't know if the organization has the capacity to undertake the work, or because we want to make sure that we're solving the right problem that was intended in these priorities. We would hold policy development work sessions with the Board. The Board would make decisions, and then allocating the resources is how these priorities would influence that budget process. And then back to the rolling plan. This same process could be repeated next year. It could be repeated once we have the strategic planning program up and running. So you're really just creating that rolling plan that can respond to, respond to changes in the environment and be more flexible. So with that, I will turn it over to Alana to facilitate a conversation about priorities. Okay.
Thank you. This is really good to see this in this format together. So.
So there were, I was struck by the fact that there were a lot of things on those lists. The two-year focus area priorities, potential additions for consideration. So I wanted to just kind of invite first a general conversation about what are the priorities that you're all thinking about? We asked you when we got to do the one-on-one interviews with you, and to a certain extent, some of these things came from those conversations. But in terms of what you're thinking about leading priorities for the county for the next couple of years, what from these big lists kind of is floating to the top for you?
Some of these things are actually actions, and some are almost values. I mean, when I look at transparency and accessibility, to me, that's something that is pervasive, not something I can check off as a project. Whereas the comprehensive strategic plan is a project in and of itself.
Something to get done.
So I have, so I have trouble putting some of these against each other.
So that seems like more of a how than a what. The transparency and accessibility seems like a how to you?
Yeah. I'm losing sight of what, the reason why we said we wanted these principles and these priorities, these focus area priorities for the next couple of years is because we wanted to ensure that they were informing the budget process for the next couple of years. Am I right about that? I feel like I shouldn't be asking the facilitator that question.
But the process is one. Also, that we've got the capacity to deliver.
So the direction that we give you in managing the rest of the organization. So this feels just like a lot of spaghetti thrown against the wall at this point to me.
Yeah. That was the spaghetti the Board threw up against the wall at the last session. So this is just purely the bullet pointed list from your last session.
And we're being asked.
What now?
Are these the right priorities or are they not the right priorities?
Well, I would correct one.
Unless we're watching a lot of this.
I think the one that reads, we have two different slides here. So it's on the potential additions, the metro local share allocation is the metro parks and nature local share allocation, and that's just a one-time decision. So as Commissioner Trese was pointing out, they're different. This is a bunch of spaghetti. We're being asked to prioritize, but we have things in multiple different categories asking for a set of prioritization. It doesn't quite hold together.
So let's take a look at them and do a little bit of discernment, a little bit of just looking at these lists and seeing which ones qualify for you as actionable priorities, and which things are more, as Commissioner Trese was pointing out, a how or something that's already happening so you don't feel the need to prioritize it, for example.
Not, not to add to this complexity, but situation. But my understanding that, yes, I do agree, Tanya, that this is, I do recall that this is what we said. But some of these had some contingency. Like, for example, I used the first bullet point, annexation. I thought there was more information that we said we would need to. And I think we put a date to when we should get that, and I think it was postponed to months to just give it a time. But I thought some of these required more information to decide how we prioritize too. So I'm not sure we have. I will just speak for myself and say, yeah, some of, some of them, I do agree. The local share is something that's on our work plan or something that's being planned, a decision that's within the next two weeks or so in front of the Board. So I'm not sure that the priority that should go with the two-year, as well as other things here that are, like, I could certainly see the operating levees, the libraries, there's a bigger conversation. And we're involved in having a conversation about levy and if you want to go a little bit braver, increase the rate, I get. But I think some, we need more information. And then what should be? I'll stop right there.
So some of these things that are listed on these two pages, you need more information about. Some of them are already in process, including things that are in the near plan to be addressed in the near future. Some of these are statements of how you might want to do something or kind of the approach to doing something. And other ones are priority kind of activities that you might be selecting, right? Those.
We need you as a thought partner on this.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is to walk through this list and kind of get a feel of which of these items are in those categories so that we're doing the kind of apples to apples, comparing the things you want to prioritize. So is, are people okay with that as an approach? Like, let's look through these and see, are there things you need more information about? Are there things that are statement of how, et cetera, et cetera, right? Okay, so the first one.
I would prefer, if I could.
Go ahead.
Asking each one of us to identify what's the top five priorities that they would have. Because again, then we can begin to look at that. It's going to be a pool of more than five, but. It's going to be a pool of more than five, but look at that pool because again, to me, we are, I feel like we're in too deep in the weeds and we're going to be directing staff that already have full capacity. So when we ask them to do something that's not already on their work, but it's like LUT's work prioritization, we approve that. They have tier one and a tier two and a tier three. So what's our priorities in a tier one, tier two environment?
Sure.
So we're giving better direction. And then we can decide, and then we can discern which ones need more work, which one needs more information for us to make that decision. So.
Sure.
That's my thoughts.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, Commissioner Willie. So let's give people a minute or two to look at these. I mean, some of you may already have it in your head, but let's just take a minute or two to look at their slides thirteen and fourteen, and I think people have them in their packets. They're also up on the screen. And, and take a look at what your top five are. And then we can go ahead and, and then we can, we can unpack those, hear those from everybody.
With an eye towards the next two years, right?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Harrington, for the clarification. This is with an eye to the next two years. This is looking at twenty-four months.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Do people need another minute? It looks like people are still reading.
Yeah, since I was going to ask the question, I should have done my homework in advance.
Well, now we know.
I picked six, Michelle.
Five.
Five. I'm ready, but I'm going to file a complaint.
Okay.
This is really hard for me to do. But that, and, you know, there's some givens in here for me.
Yep.
You know, and like, like balanced budget and continuous improvement, to me, that's, that's not even something we're mandated, for God's sake. You know, so I, I just, so I don't mark that one, but it doesn't mean it's not important.
Right. Right. And, and again, this, this reflects a pretty wide range of conversation that we've had. Yeah. So mostly, everybody's right, Chair Harrington, are you ready?
I can't be.
Okay. Commissioner Willie, do you want to start us off? Are you ready?
Well, I would, I would agree, but you know, when you say you want to complain about something, I want to give you one of those little dinky post-it notes that says, right, be detailed, put all your complaints in.
Yeah. I'm just going to hold up a yellow card to you.
As long as it's not red.
There you go. The slightest we too like. I don't want a red one, but I have a green.
He's got one yellow card.
Let's see. I'm not even going to go there because if I get two yellow cards, that means I get to skip the next game. So there you go. I know soccer.
I know soccer.
So anyway, in doing this, I kind of perplexed my own self. I, I thought I could, I could pick five in here and say, okay, let's do this. But there isn't because some of these are ongoing. So we have some stuff that's already on the docket. So we're in process. So is my top five new stuff?
Yeah.
And if we choose new stuff, what are we going to kick off the plate that's ongoing?
Right.
Okay? So I don't have an answer to that. It's just I like to hear from each one of you as to how you prioritize that. So is the, your top five new stuff a blend or what is it?
Right. And that really echoes Commissioner Trese's comment about these things are things we have to do anyway or we're already doing. So just absolutely want to acknowledge that, yeah. So Commissioner.
So for some really smart notater, you might want to think about this slide and the next one and do a version for each of us as five people.
Yeah.
And what are we saying about posters?
Things along the way. You got that, Mr. Little Recorder?
And we're going to, and we're going to note it up here visually on the, on the posters.
Yeah.
So you can just put the, there's a visual next to whichever one I had on this round. Okay. Commissioner, over to you. What are your?
Wait a minute, I asked the last question.
Right. And I'm asking the next one.
But there wasn't an answer to my question.
She started withdrawing the last time, so now she's starting.
I did start with Commissioner Rogers' last time. Are you, you can, if you don't want to start, that's fine.
No, no, I'll.
Okay.
But I still need to have that answer to the question, Tonya. Do we give you priorities that were already in process right now? And that would be what you would expect to see here from us? Or do you want new priorities?
You get to, you get to suggest new priorities as your own individual self. That's a stat just for you.
This is, I think this is a question.
Just for you.
Sorry. I think this is a question of some expectations of what would be helpful to Ms. Angie. So I, I do have a.
We don't have staff that are sitting around waiting for the board's priorities to be able to do work. Staff are at capacity across the organization. So if you add new capacity, I mean, if you add new capacity, which we don't have that ability due to our budget, so I just want to now check. So this is an exercise of negotiation. If you want to add priorities, then staff need to go back and do the work. What would come off the plate to allow for that new priority? And that's, that's up to your board to direct us to do new priorities.
Okay, so my priorities would be a blend of something that we are currently doing and will probably get done in the next six months anyway, but it's still a priority for right now. And others would be a longer priority, like the courthouse would be a longer priority, not so much work right now, but certainly coming down the pipe. Courthouse is not one of my priorities, but anyway, so that's the contrast of a priority through the immediate is going to get accomplished in the next six to twelve months versus a priority that's much more longer term and not requiring so much work upfront, but certainly in the next year or two. So anyway, that's what.
Right. So go ahead.
I don't have my five right now.
So I'm happy I started. Hang, hang on. I, I wanted to summarize what I just heard from this, from this, from this conversation and then, and then I'll go to Chair Harrington for your priorities. So what I think was important out of this conversation was the recognition that you may want to select current priorities as priorities for the next twenty-four months because if you don't select them, they are de, that, de, deselected in a way that means that they might no longer be priorities because there isn't additional staff capacity to do new things and not have to backburner some of the existing things. So it was a very useful question, Commissioner Willie. I appreciate the clarification and Ms. Angie. Yeah. So, so let's go to Chair Harrington and hear about your top five priorities, keeping in mind that they may well be things that are already ongoing or have already been undertaken.
Well, and I'm going to speak to things, more than five things.
What if you only had five things?
I don't have more than five priorities.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Anex, island annexation. This is related to the work we were doing on the initial strategic plan and we need to, in my opinion, as one, we need to change from having an aggressive neutrality position, which is in the strategic plan, to one that supports cities who want to pursue island annexation, is only that.
So this is one of your priorities?
Yes.
With that, with that carve out, with that, with that caveat?
And the reason it's a priority is because we can't afford to service those areas.
Okay.
That is the rationale behind that for being a priority.
Thank you.
Another priority is public safety and justice. On this list, I don't get why public safety district is a bullet. Cost of services in relation to priorities, we've already kicked that, right? We're not going to get that until FY whatever. So we've given the direction, go do it, but there isn't any more of our time or our political capital, right? These two-year focus areas, this is totally reducing, removing, we're abandoning the board initiatives list.
Understood.
Got it. Okay. So we don't have anything to do there until staff comes back to us, but it's still, we've given the direction already. So ergo, it's, I don't know, I don't have anything more to do, but the board has already said this is a priority for Ms. Angie and company to go deal with. This bullet, operating levies, well, we already know that the public safety levy and the WCCLS levy are up for replacement slash renewal no later than May of twenty. They expired by June of two thousand and six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So they're made twenty-five.
You said six. We'll just correct you. You're six.
They expired by June of which year?
Twenty-twenty-six.
That's what Chair is writing.
Trying to say.
You said six. You were just twenty years off, but it's okay. We're rolling.
Got it, got it. Now I understand what my mistake was. So, so yeah, we have to deal with that shit. Sorry. But I see that as part of public safety and justice and library services. So I don't quite know what operating levies by itself does. Balanced budget and continuous improvement, I mean, that's partly recognizing that we're required to adopt a balanced budget and how much more arduous it was in May and June and providing direction to Ms. Angie leading up to that. And we're going to be going through that again, but it's going to be even worse for this next budget year. So I mean, it's, we've already given direction and it's going to impact us. So it's a priority whether we like it or not, right? Some of these are just priorities whether we like it or not. The whole economic development strategy is twenty, twenty-five and beyond. Well, that's not in twenty-three, it's not in twenty-four. Which two years are we talking about, right? I mean, okay, it's out there, but related to economic development, workforce, CHIPS Act and broadband, we've given direction. We're just waiting to see what the final stuff is, the proposals from the CHIPS Act and the governor. And broadband, we're waiting for our staff to tell us what are the grant opportunities. But it does involve work. Staff's already working on it. It's going to come to us through the rolling agenda. So I didn't feel like I had to mark it as a priority, but I recognized it's a priority per the board. So that's where there's this categorization exercise.
Yeah.
I took transparency and accessibility and over in common to no unfunded mandates, just off to the side. Transportation and congestion, we already said in the last meeting, essentially, don't bother us about tolling. We're going to, we have a position of supporting the cities and, okay, you get like one chit for a rolling agenda, but if you're going to bring us tolling ad nauseam, we're going to kick it to the curb. The poverty data refresh thing, that was in leading up to the August meeting, I was looking at new poverty data. Pam and I are going to have a conversation with Marty and see what we've got.
And me because of my work with the.
Community development.
The P D W P.
Yeah. This next one, evaluate governments of clean water services and housing authority. That's a nonstarter from my standpoint. I know Commissioner Rogers and Diane and I have a conversation in the next couple of weeks. She has a good case to be made there and it's ridiculous to move forward in spinning out the housing authority. So it's just, it's just not a priority for me. Update urban, urban planning, area agreement in Beaverton, it's expired. The, the agency fell behind on that one. It has to be done and that, but that's an ongoing conversation, city manager to city manager. Financial stability, well, duh, that's another one of those off to the side. Housing and homelessness, I don't know what more we have to do, right? Just support the services our agencies are doing. Public health and safety similarly. Though in going to the CAT open house last night, I think one thing we should consider is once again, having a mental health, behavioral health town hall because we're doing a heck of a lot of things. You know, the measure one-ten funding and whatnot, and we need to crow about that. But you know, staff's doing the stuff. I don't think we have to do anything more. The county facility seismic upgrades, that's coming through the CIP facilities condition index, so that's like a rolling agenda thing. The comprehensive strategic plan, well, we've already given the direction. It's all related to the RFP and all that. Yeah, it's a, it's a priority that we've given the organization already. I'm not saying don't stop doing it, but it's already in the works, so. Minding facility needs and then the last one, operationalized improvements, that, I mean, we've given directions, staff comes to us with investment plans, we'll spend time on the investment plans. It's one of those. The poverty data refresh thing, that was in leading up to the August meeting, I was looking at new poverty data. Pam and I are gonna have a conversation with Marty and see what he got.
And me because of my work with the...
Community development.
The...
Path. Yeah. Uh, this next one, evaluate governments of clean water services and housing authority, that's a nonstarter from my standpoint. I know Commissioner Rogers and Diane and I have a conversation in the next couple of weeks. She has a good case to be made there and it's ridiculous to move forward in spinning out the housing authority. So it's just, it's just not a priority for me. Update urban, urban planning, area agreement in Beaverton, it's expired. The, the agency fell behind on that one. It has to be done and that, but that's an ongoing conversation, city manager to city manager. Financial stability, well, duh, that's another one of those off to the side. Housing and homelessness, I don't know what more we have to do, right? Just support the services our agencies are doing. Public health and safety similarly. Though in going to the CAT open house last night, I think one thing we should consider is once again having a mental health, behavioral health town hall, because we're doing a heck of a lot of things. You know, the Measure 110 funding and whatnot, we need to crow about that, but you know, staff's doing this stuff. I don't think we have to do anything more. The county facility seismic upgrades, that's coming through the CIP Facilities Condition Index, so that's like a rolling agenda thing. The comprehensive strategic plan, well, we've already given the direction, it's all related to the RFP and all that. Yeah, it's a, it's a priority that we've given the organization already. I'm not saying don't stop doing it, but it's already in the works, so. Minding facility needs and then the last one, operationalized improvements, that, I mean, we've given directions, staff comes to us with investment plans, we'll spend time on the investment plans. It's one of those, we gotta do those kinds of things because it's part of the basics of running a county government. So then I'm onto the second page. Equity, diversity and inclusion strategic action plan. I remind myself that we had our meeting August 3rd and then we've done work in August. I thought we already approved that. Or OBICE came in with information.
They came in with information, the process to, to start the planning process, but we haven't started the planning process for the next. So this would make that...
So that's gonna come to us through a rolling agenda is my point. I mean, yeah, it's one of those things. We said, yeah, figure it out. Performance evaluations, we're taking an approach of them being a little less intensive, but we have contract obligations, so we have to do that. Metzger Park, for me, this was related to island annexation and the fact that we, we have budget crises and so we need to think about that and that's one of those potential solutions for not deviating money from our general fund to niche areas. Skoggan Valley Park grant agreements, I don't know. We have, we did have a work session, but that's related to closing the loop on the metro, parks and nature, local share allocation that should be coming through us, to us in the rolling agenda. The three-year equity report, yeah, we kind of dropped the ball, we had to tell our story better. CIP, that whole line item, that's coming, coming to us in the rolling agenda. Transportation capital, that's all that CIP, I think. Courthouse, all that's there priority-wise for me is for us to get planning money from the state, period. That's the focus for the next two years. We don't do anything more with courthouse except get planning money from the state. Legislative agenda, yeah, we gotta do that. That to me is, why that has priority level for me is telling the state no more unfunded mandates and we deserve better from the state, but... And emergency management and preparedness, as far as I'm concerned from the board's standpoint, we're done. If there's stuff that comes to us via the rolling agenda, great, but...
Okay. So I wanna say back what I heard. I heard you identify priorities in three places, the annexation island item, the public safety and justice item and legislative agenda. I heard you identify those three as priorities and then the comments on the others, various, they're already in process, they're not necessarily rising to that level, they're part of something else.
I heard operating levies and balanced budget in addition to the three that you picked. So that was the five that I thought I heard you saying, you went through a lot of whys and whys not, but that's what I thought I heard you say is your top five.
Is that, is that accurate, Chair Harrington?
I, I think so, relative to where we end up with the final list.
Okay.
Don't worry, I'm gonna see what...
Okay. So Commissioner Willie, can we go to you next and just for the sake of managing the time and people can, can say their priorities and, and expeditiously if possible?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through and say why and why not on these things.
Okay, thank you.
Mine is a little bit more granular because the first couple are, first three of the five are, we are already in process, I just wanna put the rap on them. One is TLT, which includes wingspan operations, could include the new park that you referred to Skoggan's Park.
Is that on here?
No, it's not on here.
You mean Skoggan's Valley campground?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, no, we're...
I'm adding it.
So, okay, so, so say the words that you're adding.
TLT.
TLT.
TLT and wingspan parks. He's right to point out that's missing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what else?
And then in parentheses, more information on the Skoggan's Valley Park, because when, when do we have to meet that criteria?
We had a work session, we gave direction that said yes.
When's it have, when's it have to?
Go for the...
When do we have to commit to that though?
Two-year extension.
Ah, there you go. So I can, I can kind of park that though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The part that's missing there is the local share use. I raised the flag on that one and we said, we need to come back to that when we are all by the commissioners. So that's, to me, it's a rolling agenda item.
Okay.
We can do that this month.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
Um, and we already had a work session on the next one, MSTIP. Just again, kind of put the rap on that, check the box.
That's coming to us every month.
I know, I know.
Is that, that a new one?
No, well, it's not on here.
It's, it's on here. Well, that's the...
That's what, transportation capital, I thought that's what that was.
Okay.
Where's transportation capital?
Transportation capital, it's on page two, additions.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. What else, Commissioner Willie?
Unfunded mandates, in agreement with, with Catherine said.
I put it under our leg agenda.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
Leg, we'll just put a leg agenda.
So put it under legislative agenda.
Yeah. I, I said public safety districts, you said public safety and justice, I don't, those two sound to me like the same, so...
Well, you see this paper.
Okay. So you're recommending the public safety and justice versus public safety districts?
Okay.
Is that what you're recommending?
So we have big money problems, not just with patrol and the jail, but also, and the DA, we have money problems with community corrections and juvenile justice.
So this is an all-encompassing?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I'm gonna agree with that, public safety and justice.
Well, it's comprehensive, I'm not allowed to say it's big kahuna.
Okay.
It's massive.
So that's, that's five.
Okay, I'm good.
It keeps me up at night right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers, what are your five?
Well, it's interesting, you gather they're not mine particularly, or some of mine. I look at a lens of about 15 months, so this is what I have been working on.
Okay.
One is the annexation, that's cut off the island portion of it, I think that's a big issue.
So annexation is your first?
Well, it's not my first, it's your five. I didn't, I didn't...
It's one of five?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed five.
Cost of services, to me, that's a big issue, county can't continue to do a lot of things that they're doing. Transportation congestion, including tolling, that's a big deal, mine and the county, including the MSTIP, it needs to be all wrapped into one. Four, pardon, maybe there's an appetite, but I think evaluation of governments of clean water and housing, this board is, we've encountered a lot of stuff.
Okay.
And that would be an interesting reason. And the last one is financial stability. I feel like as I leave here, if it's, as it is today, I don't feel too good, so those are mine.
Okay. Thank you.
We're not gonna get it all done in 15 months.
I'll go next.
We won't get it done, I don't know.
No, we will.
Okay. Go.
Okay, Commissioner Five, what are your... Oh, Commissioner Teresa's going to start. Okay, yeah, good. Strong elbows.
Uh, first thing is the comprehensive strategic plan.
Is that on?
Where is that?
Yes, it's on the, it's on two-year focus plan, the second column.
Second column, second to the last item.
Got it. Thank you, sorry.
Balanced budget. Public safety and justice. Equity 2.0, I might achieve it here, health and housing. Says housing and homelessness.
What, what's your number four?
Equity 2.0 is on the additions list.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Commissioner, go.
Public safety and justice. I combined the operating levies and the library service levies as one, so one. So that's two. Transportation and congestion, looping into that transportation capital, because there's MSTIP looped into the transportation capital, but here is specific things being called that, so that's three. And then... The fourth one is economic development strategies, 2025 and beyond. And then I think I was combining the housing and homelessness and public health, behavioral health together to... Housing and homelessness, I mean, a bonus, public health and safety, which includes behavioral health, justice, but they sort of overlap in terms of the county and the managers' deep departments, it's one day, it's a day, but, um, so those are my priorities.
I don't understand some of the creativity.
Uh, sneaking in on a, a bonus priority because in my perspective, I'm seeing housing and homelessness, public health, in apprentices, mental health, behavioral health in, as one. So you could say it as a bonus, picking the sixth one, or, I don't know.
So let me rephrase, I wasn't trying to call up what Commissioner Five was saying, but rather ask a question of Alana with regard to creativity of combining things. I heard from Commissioner Teresa, health and housing going together.
And then...
Commissioner Five, housing, homelessness and behavioral health. And the reason that I'm asking is because I'm like wondering, what are we doing differently than we're already doing? If all we're doing is continuing to deliver the services we already have now, that's in the 80%.
I didn't think...
If you wanna do more, that's what you're saying, you wanna do something differently or do more.
Then I have a fundamental difference in how I looked at this exercise and I'm worried about that because I looked at this exercise as whether or not it was ongoing, we were prioritizing.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the way I looked at it.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to understand, what are you prioritizing since you combined health and housing? Are you saying hold, and housing departments?
I can take, I can take health out of that and I can go with housing and homelessness.
So I'm still wondering, yes, I, I hear that, but I'm still wondering what it means. As far as money goes, we're obligated to spend out the Affordable Housing Bond, we're obligated to spend out SHS, but I want our staff.
I'm not just thinking about the resources from a capital standpoint or a dollar standpoint revenue, I'm thinking about where the staff resource goes. So that's how I looked at this. I looked at this as, what am I, if, what would...
So, so...
If you only do five things, what...
Assessment and taxation and elections aren't even on these lists. We haven't said, stop doing those things. That's why I think this list is being used for a different purpose.
And I, I grant you that...
Across the...
Yes, I mean, I felt the same way when I sat down to do this, but I also know that we've got limited resource here and if, if you asked me what my limited resource is, how I would act, you know, allocate based on this list, that's what it's like.
Yep.
But yes, obviously.
But for your resources, of time and political capital, there isn't anything you and I have to do as commissioners other than give our staff a thumbs up and listen to complaints from the public. We don't have to raise any more money or anything.
And I didn't look at this as from my political capital and resource, I looked at it from the organization's...
Yeah.
I, I think, and I register that I think we all had a little different lens when we went through this.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna make another pass at it in a minute, but I wanna acknowledge, Commissioner Teresa, that what I heard you saying was a reflection of the conversation that Commissioner Willie and Ms. Angie had about if you don't identify something as an ongoing priority, given how short resources are for staff, it is equivalent to deprioritizing it in some way in, in terms of what might this... So I, I hear that what you did, Commissioner Teresa, was to pick the things that were in fact ongoing priorities for you.
But if you gave me 10 priorities, which is probably more realistic in relationship to ongoing, I, I would have an easier time with this.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I trusted my other commissioners to come up with issues that where I didn't identify. For example, the operational improvements was critical to our future, but I didn't put them down in my top five.
Right.
So...
Right. Right. And, and this kind of, I mean, with, with scarce resources, with shrinking resources, these conversations are always that type of challenge. I mean, that is in fact part of the reason, so absolutely, thank you for naming that.
Except that, the choice, the forced choices that we're making are not, are not, don't, don't weigh the same, don't, don't have the same characteristic, sure. So I think I would have, it would have been easier for me if we had improved the list. All of us, Catherine, every, you all talked about what you took off, okay, I'm not taking doing that, that's, that's done, you know, it, I think that that might have been, made it easier, but I think we've lost sight of what we're trying to get as an outcome of this exercise.
No, I, I, can I?
Yes, please.
Share. I tried to do this homework and I was trying to write down in terms of my responsibilities as a commissioner on this board and what are some of the functions that I perform on this board. And what it drilled down to is there are mission-driven functions that we do, the basic philosophy and the broad goals of the organization, which a lot of these priorities included in that, which is why I didn't call up, because there are necessary mission-driven broad goals that we have to do. And then the other bucket was there are policy functions that we perform as a board, the basic decisions about how we decide on how we allocate resources. So when I was picking what, you know, that's what I, my intentions were, is to focus on policy. Of course, we do administration work as well, you know, how service, you know, we're constantly evaluating how services are actually delivered and react to constituents' comments and concerns and feedback they give us. And then also, you know, management, like our physical property and how that's... So I think for me in this exercise, what I focused on was the functions I performed from a policy, rather than getting into the weeds of mission-driven broad goals which are delivered. I think it's very well fit together, this is a reality check, this slide right here is 20% versus the 80%. So that's what I, the exercise that I embarked on to be prepared of, what, which areas that I run. And I appreciate the quantification piece of, I picked certain numbers, perhaps, yeah, by the few of this, but that's what I was focusing on.
Sure.
As a policy, rather than getting into, you know, the organization, the mission-driven, which is definitely consistent and constant, that there's always, our agendas are not free, you know, the rolling agenda is constantly busy and packed. But what else, what other head can we give to the staff? And that's how I was doing that exercise.
Yes, yes, thank you for, for sharing your, your process and, right, nothing about this promised to be easy or simple, I appreciate that. And I wanna also appreciate that you all appreciate the complexity of doing this, you know, the nuance of like, is this ongoing or is this just new initiatives? Like having this conversation, I think, is super useful. Cindy described the things that came out, are you just gonna keep that? So let's look at what we can employ. So, uh.
Can you stick them up there?
We put it on the bottom of the screen. Like, I can't reach very high. Somebody taller than me could. Can you see this?
I'm usually not called in to be taller.
But here you are.
There I am.
I've always been taller. Okay, so this is the
Who, who, who?
Can we take this slide down so we're not
Is there money in the budget to buy clean water services and new screen?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll hurt the screen. Okay, so this is, this is what, after the compilation of all of your, um, comments, we came up with, and maybe Cindy, you can call up the number of people who said each. So the annexation had two people. There were two people who said that.
Oh, let's not write on it.
Okay. Oh, right on. There are people who said, two people who said
Those things, because we're not using them for this exercise and we're not going to ruin their screen if we put them over there.
Okay. We can do that. I don't think we're going to ruin a screen that's done this in the box in some places.
That's a lot more expensive than my
You can get right here on the map.
Yeah.
The map.
I got it. Okay.
Read the back.
I'm not
All right. Yes. So, so this is annexation had
Yeah, I thought that was my T P I would say. Two.
Two, and public safety and justice had
You need a darker pen.
And four, I need a darker pen.
Yeah.
Sorry. Use that red one, that'll work.
I got it.
Here it is.
All right. Was two, this is for cost of service in relationship to priorities, operating lobbies, two. Two. Balanced budget and continuous improvement, two. Two. Economic development strategies, one. Transportation congestion, two. Uh, evaluate governance of clean water services and housing, one. One. Financial stability. Housing and homelessness, two. Comprehensive strategic plan, one. Equity versus inclusion, two. One. One. Scotland's Valley Park, one. Transportation capital, one. Legislative agenda, two.
And is the N S T A do that?
That's our transportation.
Yeah.
Probably supported to do that.
And then the T L T, okay.
So what does this tell us?
Well, I, that's what I want you to tell me.
Public safety.
Public safety is the priority number one.
So the majority of us are going to have to deal with some things that are number one, just because one person wants to talk about it.
Not necessarily.
I know, that's where I'm really wondering.
Your ones and our ones are getting combined.
So there is, there is a clear emphasis, I'll just call it an emphasis, on public safety and justice, right with four. Um, then the
Let's give her another ten.
Because I'm sure, that, 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 sorry, I'm sorry. I want to be different. Okay. Very long. Um, so that one clearly with four, and then the annexation, operating lobbies, balanced budget, continuous improvement, transportation and congestion, housing and homelessness, and legislative agenda, all got two.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I, I'd just like to understand why we're doing this and, and, and because, because personally, I think this is like a flawed attempt at prioritization.
Yep.
But so, so I'm worried about that. And I'm worried about what the end result of this, of this exercise is intended to be. Because I, I don't want to walk out of here and say, oh, there you go, Tonya. That's
No, we won't have a work product by five o'clock.
Well, but, but my point is, I'm, I'm just concerned about the, the process here. And I, and I, I don't know if I'm the only one.
Nope, I might be a hundred percent.
I need you to define why you think it's flawed though, because we have listed all of our, I mean, we kind of use my own terminology. We threw up all over the table at the last meeting by putting all these things on here. And now we're just going through and refining them as to which ones do we think are our top five priorities? Because we can't have all of them and we're not going to prioritize all of them. So we picked what's
I can tell you why I think it's flawed.
Why is it flawed?
Because, because it was, um, we did just throw up a bunch of ideas. There really wasn't much rigor around what those ideas were or where they would go in, uh, you know, in, in different areas of the county, what, what monetary impact there was, what resource impact there, there is. So, so for me to look at those priorities without that information, it's pretty hard. So that's why I think it's flawed. And, and, and I hope I'm not being offensive to anybody through by saying that. And, but my question hasn't really been answered, is why are we doing this and what are the next steps with this information?
Yep. So, um, I appreciate the noting that there's information missing and that you might, if you had information like the monetary impact or the resource impact, that what you prioritize might change based on having more information. The reason that I wanted to do this is to reflect back to you kind of what things did you all come up with when you were identifying priorities and reflect back to the group. Where did people land when they picked their five-ish, um, top priorities? Um, so my intention would be to have a conversation about the things that anybody picked and see if we can refine, um, because we, we took this really big list and now we narrowed it down into fewer items. Um, and, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Treese, that in terms of refining, that there may be more information than you want to help you make that further kind of narrowing of the decision. But this at least gives us something that's less all the spaghetti on the, on the wall kind of approach. It's a, it's a refinement.
May, what I do appreciate, too, may I just finish this? What I do appreciate is that we're talking together about these things. And I do, I, I, I do value that quite a bit. So, thank you, and I, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Commissioner Treese, sorry, I didn't mean to. But I was gonna, uh, re-vote.
We're not ready for a re-vote.
All right, I'm gonna change my vote about the public safety and justice and then I want to vote something to move along this prior, this exercise. That way, there's a lot of twos here. Now that
But you can't vote now.
Hey, question.
Within the thing, do you?
Oh, each of us can. Every, each of us can right now.
Okay. What do you want to, what do you want to change?
Uh, yeah, I would like to I would like to vote for the balanced budget and continuous improvement.
And what are you taking off?
Uh, public safety and justice, because it has enough
See, and that's, that's
That's the problem.
That's what I was getting. You can't really do that because it, because that's, that defeats the process of a priority.
So can I make this process a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, I'm hearing comments that we're missing information. I'm not going to use flawed, but just missing information, um, and which makes it hard to prioritize. And then there's other priorities not, also, if it's not a priority, what does that mean to the work continuing that we would, as some of you be assuming, will still continue? Staff can take both the focus area priorities and the potential additions for consideration and determine. I'm going to say of one paragraph, kind of scope of what are interpretation of what those are, um, and potential resources and come back to your board. My question is, what is missing from the priorities that needs to be examined and/or if you want to take anything off of the list?
I like that. I'd like to take off.
So, so this is what we're working from now?
No, I would go back to
Go back to that?
So I guess
I am in total disagreement.
Okay.
Okay, so what?
Wait.
Okay.
We started this process because we are operating with a strategic plan that was adopted from, lastly, in the nineteen nineties. We have a discussion version from twenty-ten. And we won't have a comprehensive effort started until twenty-twenty-five. So we said we wanted to look at a strategic plan. So we had one meeting where we started going over principles and then we had a really good conversation about what the heck is on our mind after having read those things and what are the various topics we need to talk about. And now we're trying to turn them into a two-year work plan. That is not what we set out to do. And I also happen to know, because I've done what I do as chair, I've worked with staff on early work product. And they're working on a very useful document that still needs a little bit more work about key focus areas over these next two-plus years. So this whole priority business of today, in my words, has been hijacked away from what the original purpose is towards something that does feel familiar to us, but we still have nothing to say that we have an interim strategy. And so goes back to after the break, I try to asking the question, what are we working towards? What is the outcome we're looking for today? And great, we can keep talking till our deadline at five o'clock, but it just, we're, we keep walking in circles. And no, we can't just change our votes. I mean, yes, we could, but from what point? We haven't even come to consensus or agreement for a majority. All you've done is have us go through another spaghetti exercise. So I feel like we've really abandoned the strategic intent.
So, go ahead.
Can I reiterate that?
Yeah.
I looked at this a little bit differently in that I have listed my priorities for the next six to twelve months, because I want to kind of keep that top of mind for me. And then some of them are board priorities and some of them are district four priorities. Um, but when I looked at this, and then from what you said, we have, we have a rolling agenda that is packed. And that rolling agenda has staff updates on a whole myriad of projects, things that we need information of. That's what I thought we were going to try and consolidate and say, we get fifteen staff reports, but not one of them deals with what we consider to be the number one priority that we're dealing with. Now, I'm saying, I don't think that's going to be true, but it could be. So we're, we're checking off all these boxes of things that are on the rolling agenda, but how many of them hit our top five priorities of most important things we need to talk about? And so we're, staff is consuming a, a large amount of time giving us information that's not in their top five. And so that's what I thought this was about, so we could direct staff to say, these are our important things. Please focus, prioritize your time to do those things. Now, am I missing the mark? I mean, am I consistent with what you said or just whatever it is?
I appreciate what you've said. It relates, I think, to part of this twenty percent, right? But what I heard Commissioner Treese talking about is, I can't say for some of the things she prioritized, how that relates to the twenty percent at all, but she wants to support staff in the eighty percent. So like, what direction we're not pulling, we're still in separate votes.
Okay.
Or, you know, grow it in some direction.
Good, I'm sure Paul will leave you there, but I'll catch up later.
Can you help me understand what I said that doesn't make it silly? Let me just take a look. Just help me. Health and housing. You talked about wanting to support staff, but I asked you quite quietly
No, you didn't.
Affordable housing and health and human services. And I think I, what I said was, the way I looked at this is what would, what would hurt most of it went with?
So relative to the twenty percent, which is what he was talking about, what do we have to do? Right? The kinds of things that come to us and what's important for what we need to accomplish. Right? He was looking at in terms of how we spend our time for the next six months, a year, and a little bit longer.
Right.
All of this stuff. Not all. Those things are part of the eighty percent, not the twenty percent.
And I said, I was looking at this from a staff resource perspective, not from what I do individually. So, so
So we've gone through this whole exercise in our own, in our own votes.
Yes. It, yes. And that, that's why I brought that up, because I felt like that had happened, that different people were looking at this, different members here were looking at this through different lenses.
I agree. So that, but that's why the purpose of processes, to try and convince that down.
And, no, I, and what I'm also a little confused about is, I don't know, I don't know that I understand what you were saying about this being divorced or separate from the strategic planning process. And, and the, the reason I asked that question is I put comprehensive strategy, I was the only one that put that one up there. And to me, that, that sets our path and helps us with the prioritization.
Yeah, but we're not, okay, so let's take that as an example. And I guess I don't have great slides right here. No, Rachel's slide. All we're doing with that in twenty-twenty-four is developing the R F P, selecting and consulting, and we're going to get an early work plan, right? And this was not
Engagement plan.
This was, that's all going to come to us if we're rolling it down. But this was for a two-year focus area, right? Remember I asked what two-year when we talked about? Six to twelve months, that's twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four.
So it underscores the fact that we've all rolled, I, I just think, and maybe I'm the only one, maybe I'm the only one that's off my, my little line.
No, I, it, thank you, Commissioner Treese. I think it's, it's true that people have different lenses to be looking at this, and that's one of the reasons that we have to have these conversations. Um, I think the whole, um, the whole part of the conversation that's about kind of which existing staff activities are we emphasizing or boosting up or wanting to be sure there are more resources for? Um, you know, in terms of if you identify this priority, that is part of the prioritization conversation, even if it's something, excuse me, that's on your rolling agenda, for you to say this is a priority and we want to elevate this, um, it's still saying to the staff and to the leadership, you know, this is something that we care a lot about and allocating additional resources, like this is where we want to focus some of our additional attention and resources. And that's part of how this can be a useful message to staff.
I can agree that that's useful, but I don't see how any of that relates to strategic planning.
So
That's all very, um, more tactical workload management.
Yeah, there's a place, there's a confluence, right, between strategic planning and actual work.
Yep.
Of course, there needs to be.
Yep. And we're right past it.
And the, the, the place, um, I think to continue this conversation, because obviously we're not going to get it finished today, is to think about, you know, what's the additional information that you need to be able to say, you know, these things are the priorities and, and with an awareness that it means letting go of some other things. And for you to be able to say in, in one vote, as one board, yes, these are the things that we're going to value, and maybe when it comes up on your rolling agenda, you're going to spend more time on it, or you're going to ask more questions, or you're going to delve into it in a, you know, in a particular way, you're going to want to allocate more resources to it. That's part of articulating a prioritization process. This isn't, and it never has been, a full strategic planning process, because you all know that's way more involved than what we're doing. But this is, this is, you know, kind of flagging or setting up directional signs um, toward the six to twelve months or twelve to twenty-four. It's, it's a pretty near-term focus.
You didn't ask us to say what did we want to have come off the list.
No, and I appreciate it, Ms. Angie added that, um, and that wasn't a
I, I did some of that. I absolutely did. I absolutely did some of that.
Right, and I think that that's a legitimate question because, again, because of resource constraints. I I like that question. I think it's great.
I think we did that by process of elimination of what we didn't choose.
Um, so.
No, we didn't, we didn't have a collective conversation about what we're saying is no longer important.
And also, I think, uh, in this process, there's a natural built-in to negotiation among ourselves.
Sure.
And I don't think we embarked on that yet. I just, while I was like, oh, I'm going to change my vote before we get it, we get to that negotiating, what comes off the list. Uh, but this will always be like the board deciding these prior sensations. And then this list would require at least three commissioners to agree on a category to be able to become a board prioritization. So I think it's a good start around this journey. And, um, and I like to hear more about, you know, the chair has much more information about because it's being the chair. I like to hear more about the the list of, um, the the list that you mentioned, Chair Harrington, that it's coming to us, that the staff is putting together. Because if that's happening, are we duplicating efforts? Was this day in mute? You know, was this a waste of resources for all of us together? If that's happening, then should we have voted? Like, I'm not aware of any list that's coming. This was a new information day. But it was a good exercise, or it went through it. But the fact that there is something coming to us that will list all of this.
Yeah, I mean, I can't I can't speak to that, but but thank you. Um, and I think, you know, we have a couple of minutes. Uh, we can take a look at these and and.
So I wanna I I want to speak to that because I don't want there to be uncertainty of the board that information hasn't been provided to the full board. What we were working on is the start, and I want to say an initial start, looking at these priorities, the other potential additions. There's things that I will say I feel are just they have, and your board has talked about it, they just have to continue. And I'm going to say ones that didn't rise to the top, but, um, uh, it's modernizing H R and I T. It's essential, but they weren't on your board's top, but that is work that is occurring. So taking those, starting what would be an initial scope, um, and the feedback that Catherine made feedback, more work that needed to be done, some clarifications of of categories. And what we had talked about is looking at that for November, because there wasn't time to get the work done internally. So I just want to be assured that that's what we were working towards. That it would improve the priorities and focus areas, which then in turn would end up being, in essence, an initial kind of strategic point, it's your work to your action plan or to your work plan.
Thank you. Yeah. So, uh, as our as our last thing, if there are things on these lists that that people want to take off, um, I think it would be good to hear them. Um, and also the summary, I want to, after we do that, if people have things that you think, you know, we want to take off this list, I I want to make note of that. And then I'll I'll kind of summarize about where we are and what I think some of my next steps might be.
I don't think we need to do another one of these until that document is available.
I'd kind of like to know, because in modernizing H R and I T, that's a great idea if I wasn't on the list, so.
Yeah, it's.
It didn't bubble up.
It did bubble up for your board.
Yeah.
But it it bubbles up for me as a county administrator, though.
So what should we have asked? Shouldn't we have asked what you're doing currently right now as priorities projects? What's your staff doing right now as priority projects? And are they on here?
The R P?
That's on here.
Are they all on there? Because, you know, your staff is all working on stuff. Some of it, stuff that we've asked them to do, some of it that it's the immediate fire.
So the ones that we were looking at is what are areas that would also come to the board do? So that doesn't mean it's a comprehensive Washington County work plan. That's a very separate distinction.
So remember, part of what we started down, we had a couple of different reps. We had the comprehensive strategic plan was going to take us longer. So we wanted to identify a placeholder for ourselves, an interim, right? And now we've changed the word to initial. And we, as we went through the budget, we realized we have a pretty big list of stuff to come back to. And so we started calling it, what is that pile of big stuff? Now, we've transitioned from calling it the pile to what are the key focus areas? And, uh, there's there's some of that in this, but I think the element of, I I totally agree that the realm we're working in now is what is our focused action plan? Uh, but we also have to ask ourselves, what is that strategy we're telling for the community that we're doing? These are the action plans that falls under that. And then that whole list has a lot of what's coming to the board. There's other stuff that Ms. Angie has to manage that doesn't affect us directly from a policy standpoint, but takes management's time and investment of money. So we have a role of investment of money. Okay, so that's why it's present on the list, but it has a different level of focus from us. So it's taken longer to get the rolling agenda sorted out. A lot of the stuff that's on this interim list that we started because we were having, uh, a conversation about what do we need to look at differently from a strategic planning standpoint, like annexation, we need to do differently. That is different than an action plan. So we've really confused models here. And it's just taken longer. And so I think, um, we need to give staff a chance to, uh, keep working on how that stuff is written up so we have something more concrete to get our heads around discussing. And, uh, I think with a little bit more effort, after we wade through all of that in November, then maybe in December, we will be able to articulate to our community what are the strategic statements that we're be we're be following as evidenced by the action plan? Because the community is right, we're not following either of those two strategic action plan documents.
Thank you.
And I think for Commissioner Rogers' sake, we should have some placeholder before his tenure's over, the end of twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you for that summary. Um, I did want to point out that Cindy described the last of the, uh, principles um, based on the thing that you all gave, uh, thumbs up to, but I wanted to make sure that you started writing before we wrap up today so that we have all of the sorry. We won't put it on the. We won't put it on the screen, I know that made everybody nervous. So here it is.
Here's one.
All right, so this one now says, mission driven. Now says, so this is just a a check, make sure we got it right. We commit ourselves to serving the community and providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulated services while actively engaging others. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective and efficient organization. Innovation and calculated risk-taking are essential. We commit ourselves to best practices and professional standards and to continuous improvement and creativity in ways that reduce longer-term costs and mitigate risks.
So the only thing I would change is in the very first sentence, I between community and providing, I would get rid of the word and in the middle. And in the very last sentence, there are too many ands.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. But this is, does this work for you all as a principle? This is, I think, what you what you said just after you came back from break.
Uh, yep.
Okay. Commissioner? Okay. All right. Thank you all for this. And we will take all of the feedback and the notes and come up with some next steps. Um, and really appreciate you doing the the this difficult work of of talking about priorities and trying to identify them. Um, and really appreciate your, um, knowledge of and acknowledgement of the complexity in all this work. Thank you so much for your time this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.